Run basketball in five weeks.
Kind of sunny.
Where do you have it down?
I might even break my shorts on again, I'm not sure.
Who refers to the office one day? Receptionist. Where's the rest of that?
Oh, good.
That wasn't plugged yet.
What? Oh, yeah. You're not wrong. I know.
I've had one, don't do it.
Good evening, Mr. Ben, how the heck are you?
Pretty good, how are you doing?
Well, staying out of trouble board today.
That's right, my crashed.
Every morning, it reminds me, I better stay bored.
What are you doing this morning? We always stay in the morning.
When did you do it?
Are we gonna have to go on Saturday morning? Yeah, I've never been sorry. I was cutting across the way really fast and I hit an edge, you know how a mousetrap goes like that?
Yeah.
It was just like.
The water.
In the water. And then the water stopped me, I didn't bounce, and my feet came up from behind me, and it's a scorpion. So my back cracked. Unfortunately, one of my buddies, he was a doctor, and he held me in the water. He thought I broke my neck. He thought I broke my neck in this peril. Yeah.
Freezing?
Oh, that's not freezing. Jeff. We usually ski in doctor.
I just turned eighty-five degrees. That's just seven o'clock. Fifty-nine. What's that guy's name? Ginsen. Ginsen. Did you listen to what I said?
Small crowd today, too.
Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lesprance, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lesprance.
Here.
Treasure Pierce.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Clerk Slater here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. There a motion or discussion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
So motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the agenda, all in favor? All, I'm sorry, all right, trustee Nordhook.
I think there was a correction on the deer hunting. In the minutes, we had three days instead of three seasons.
We're just approving the agenda.
Okay, that's fine. Proceed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have no presentations tonight, so we're at public comments, the first round. You're able, please come to the podium, state your name and address for record keeping, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone in the virtual audience, Ms. Brott?
If any one of our Zoom participants would like to speak right now, please raise your hand. If you're participating via phone, please dial star nine. No one.
Okay, that'll conclude this portion. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Because I wasn't looking.
So again, I'm Joey Ginsen, three, four, two, zero, Glenstone Court. There are two things I wanted to ask about. One is, again, our neighbor with the landscape company. I was wondering if there's any update on what progress has been made with that. If any of you have driven by there, there's mountains of debris there. The second thing is the homeless encampment under the bridge on Twenty-Eighth Street. I was wondering what-ish steps are being taken for that? You know, I don't want Grand Rapids to turn into the West Coast, that started off as one camp, two, and spread and spread. Thank you.
Thank you. We can address both of those, Mr. Manager Swayze has information, and also I spoke with Representative State Rep. Thomas Albert and his staff this week. They're reaching out to Eagle directly and seeing what they can do, and then you're not the only residents that we've heard from about the homeless encampment and also that area and the rising crime, and so we'll make, we'll address those in the Board Comment section.
Can you please discuss what rates of crime there is there?
The hotels specifically that are in that same area. Since COVID, the rates dropped, and that, those particular hotels that are in that area are just a magnet for lots of different types of crime. It's been an ongoing problem. Add to that recently, the pop-up of the homeless encampment, so. But we'll go into details because it's a huge priority. Article six, approval of the consent agenda.
I think that's where I want to just make a correction in the minutes for the deer hunting, I said three days instead of three seasons. In the minutes.
Shipley makes motion to approve the consent agenda with those corrections pointed out by Timmy.
I'm not sure what he's talking about, what are you talking about?
You gotta find the minutes.
Somewhere in the four hundred and seventy-six pages of the document.
Clerk Slater, it looks like in Article nine, the last item, it says that the requirement to hunt and do only in three permits as defined by township. It should be three seasons or periods as defined by township. It's on the third page of the minutes.
I know where that, I know where it is.
Sorry. Yeah, I see it. Was there a second on trustee Shipley's motion?
Sure, I'll support that, with the changes that Timmy requested.
Can I have a comment before we vote? I'm just curious where the planning commission minutes are that we have not seen for several months?
I can talk to Brian about that.
Thank you.
So it's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the consent agenda with a specific change as noted by trustee Nordhook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there a discussion or a motion to approve tonight's financial actions?
Motion to approve.
Support by Shipley.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the financial actions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article eight, unfinished business. Item zero-three-four, twenty-twenty-two, the Plant Moran forensic analysis and implementation of those recommendations. I put this on the agenda at our last meeting, we as a board accepted Plant Moran's forensic analysis, and with its analysis, Plant Moran made ten specific recommendations regarding improvements to the township's financial controls. The suggestion, I noted in my memo. I'm not sure why all the different attachments to the report were included, but that was a mistake, it was my intent to only include that specific recommendation page. Is there any discussion or any comments?
I think it's a good plan, I like it, I like your suggestion, and I make your motion that we implement the plan, and as you said, make a motion to direct staff to execute the recommendations from the plan, per the plan provided by Plant Moran, and report the status of the plan to the board at each meeting until completed.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, to direct staff to implement the specific recommendations included within the Plant Moran forensic analysis. Attachment one, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Manager Swayze, you all set with that? New business, zero-seven-five, twenty-twenty-two. Proposed closure of Tree Line Drive. Manager Swayze?
Yep, so we see this from time to time, actually, we saw one just last meeting, but we've had a request from a neighborhood to close a road for a block party. This is Tree Line Drive from Cascade Woods Drive to seventy-three-eighty-nine slash seventy-three-ninety Tree Line Drive. They're planning on having a block party on Saturday, October twenty-second, from three o'clock to seven o'clock. The Road Commission is actually the entity responsible for road closures, but they require a resolution from the township board before they'll consider the request. As our protocol, both Chief Majors and Deputy Diappa reviewed the request, and don't have any concerns with the road closure.
I move to approve the resolution.
Support.
That's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesprance.
Yes, motion carried. Item zero-seven-six, twenty-twenty-two. Appointment of Township Assessor.
Great, thank you. I like doing these ones. So we currently have our assessing department staffing model with a contractual level four assessor, our manager of assessing services, which is a full-time level three, and that, at least right now, is deputy, full-time deputy assessor, which is a level three, a full-time senior appraiser, which is a level two, and a part-time administrative assistant, which is a level one. So in early two thousand twenty, our assessor, Roger McCarty, retired from the township after a long career where he served several roles in the assessing department. Prior to Roger obtaining his MMAO or Level Four certification, which is the certification we're required to have from the Michigan State Tax Commission. We utilized a contractual assessor, and Roger served as the department head. When Roger obtained the necessary certification, the contract assessor was eliminated, and Roger assumed the role of assessor. When Roger retired, we reverted back to the contractual assessor model. We initially retained the services of certified assessor Debbie Ring, while Jennifer was also promoted to the manager of assessing services and the department head of the department. Structure was always intended to be temporary, as Jen pursued her certification. In two thousand twenty-one, Ms. Ring resigned her role as the Township Assessor for personal reasons. The Township Board then approved a contract with Kentwood MMAO Assessor Andy Johnson at the same cost of two thousand dollars. So I'm pleased to announce Jennifer has successfully passed her MMAO certification, and she's now eligible to serve as the Cascade Township Assessor. And with that, I'm recommending that she be appointed to that position, and the contract for assessor services with Andy Johnson be terminated effective nine-thirty-two thousand and twenty-two. So Jen has served both as a deputy assessor and manager of assessing services. Prior to that, she served in various assessing roles with Plainfield Township. In her time in Cascade, she's proved to be an invaluable member of our management team, has served as the department head for the assessing team since two thousand twenty. As I mentioned, by getting her certification, she can now assume the remaining legal duties and requirements of the Township Assessor, including signing the role each year. Jennifer's worked very closely with our contractual assessors over the past two and a half years, and both of them feel that Jennifer is well-prepared for these responsibilities. Jen and Andy have discussed a transition plan and feel that the transition should be seamless. So our currently contract for assessor services is two thousand dollars per month or twenty-four thousand dollars annually. I'm recommending an eighteen thousand dollar per year wage increase for Jennifer with her appointment as Township Assessor. This will bring her in line with other MMAO assessors in the West Michigan area, and still will provide an overall cost savings for the township. With that, I'd like the board to confirm the appointment of Jennifer Genter as Township Assessor, and approve the termination of the contract for assessing services with Andy Johnson, effective nine-thirty-two thousand and twenty-two.
Ben, as always, I'm gonna ask you, although it's kind of obvious, are you satisfied that this will add to the value of your team?
I'm very satisfied, Jen has been doing a great job, super excited that she passed her certification, I know she's super excited about it, too. And I think, you know, she's done a great job of developing her team, and will now be able to take over those last few responsibilities.
And one other comment, too, from my lips, is that I've always maintained that wherever possible, we should have in-house qualified people. I feel that in-house qualified people are more dedicated to the township, and that is no slam against contractors. But I'm just much more comfortable if we do it within-house, so that's all I have to say.
With that, I'd be very proud to consider your recommendation for Jen, for Genter, to the position of Township Assessor.
And I support.
Does that include the wage increases?
Yes.
That's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to terminate our current contract with our Township Assessor to hire Ms. Genter on as our full-time Township Assessor, with all the stipulations in the memo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Welcome. Keep doing a great job.
Thank you.
Zero-seven, twenty-twenty-two, Establishment of the Strategic Plan Implementation Committee. This is, we discussed this last week, the board at its last meeting formally adopted our Cascade Township twenty-twenty-two strategic plan, and the plan was the result of, over the course of the past year, hearing from over two thousand residents, tax-paying residents, who shared their thoughts and opinions about what they think that priorities should be in the township. The Strategic Plan Steering Committee was really helpful in making sure that we as a board were able to hear from many different residents throughout the entire township, not just certain residents that show up at meetings, or certain residents who have certain priorities. They made sure that we as a township proactively reached out to every area in the township, to every household. So I think that having this committee continue to act as a conduit between our various boards and committees, and with this board, will help us a lot in making sure that we implement the steps in the strategic plan, and also that the focus stays on what tax-paying residents actually want, not certain people within the township, or or beers off our already stated objectives. So with that, discussion, motion?
Two small things. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. The misspelling of implementation because of keying error. The word implementation on the.
In the resolution?
Resolution, yeah, resolution to establish the Cascade Township Strategic Plan Implementation, that's supposed to be D instead of an I, that's the minor thing. But the other one I just wanted to ask about is number five. The three-year terms, is the first full term January one, twenty-twenty-three to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six? Or is the first full term beginning now? Or October one, you know, September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two, and runs to twelve-thirty-one, twenty-five?
We should clarify, right?
Yeah. So if we start the term immediately, then it would make sense that it goes until December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. If we're gonna say it begins January one, then we don't start till January one and twenty-twenty-three, so.
Still end of twenty-five, though.
What would your preference be?
I'm sorry, twenty-five, yeah.
Calendar year is probably clearer, but it'd be nice to have it start in October.
Yeah, so, but here, but here, that's just confusion, it shall end on December thirty, and any, oh, any new term. So I guess when do we want this first term to end? So the first full, the first full term will begin immediately and end on December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five? Or twenty-twenty-four?
It would be all of twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Even if you start a couple of months early.
So it'd be, so it'd be three years plus.
Couple of months. Just to get going.
So how do we word it specifically?
So I think we reworded that the first full term will begin immediately and end on December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five.
Ms. Brott, does that make sense if we're taking minutes?
The first full term begins immediately and ends on December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five.
All subsequent terms will begin on January one.
Now, just.
And then the next room would start January one. I'm sorry. Jim, did you?
Some discussion on that, because the next item we're gonna talk about are the people that are being appointed, and some of them are board members.
Well, let's wait and do that item when we get to it, this one's just whether or not to implement the.
Yeah, I know, but the three years would have a bearing on that.
Because there might be another election before that happens.
So I'd like to see that be one-year appointments and then reappointments each year.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. So number.
Specific number item is that?
Five, still.
Five, it would just be, it would be everything that you have in there except the board for one-year terms. And we said, beginning when?
Immediately.
Immediately, and the first term ending then.
December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
Correct.
Yeah. We changed that completely, Chrissy, so.
But it ends.
And then reappoint then.
And then reappointed by.
You're gonna mess up our brilliant edits, Ben?
I'm gonna mess up the brilliant additions, so the appointments are actually based on their membership on certain committees and commissions, so, which are all staggered, so there might be a planning commissioner on it now, whose term ends this year and is reappointed, so. Because of that, it might be best to do reappointments for all the positions every year, even if they're the same, just so you can recognize at the end of each year, if there's somebody on the committee that isn't. You know, if they're not, if they decide, you know, you're not gonna reappoint them, or they don't wanna be back on the planning commission, then you gotta reappoint them on the strategic planning committee as well.
So number five, remembers of the committee shall be appointed by the Township Supervisor and approved by the Township Board for one-year terms. The first term begins immediately and goes until December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, and new appointments are made by the supervisor each successive year?
Spire annually?
Just to, so, just to clarify for minutes, it's not gonna end in the twenty-twenty-two, be reappointed again, in twenty-twenty-three.
Yes.
So they start now and go all the way to twenty-twenty-three?
Trying to run a more structured meeting. Can you hold off till the second public comment session? Does that make sense? Well, then we're consistent, that's good. Any discussion comments?
I, I'm, I move to approve the Strategic Plan Implementation Committee Resolution with the changes to number five.
Support.
Do those changes need to be restated specifically, or are we just? That's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the resolution creating the Strategic Plan Implementation Committee with the stated changes to paragraph five. All in favor?
Aye.
Is it a roll call? Clerk Slater, thanks. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesprance.
Yes. Motion carried. Item zero-seven-eight, twenty-twenty-two, appointments to that Strategic Plan Implementation Committee. With this one, I just thought if it's not broke, don't fix it, so it's the same people that were on the steering committee. I've agreed to transition to the implementation committee, there was one vacancy, and that was on the planning commission. And then the good thing is they're going to report monthly to the board, correct, Ben?
That's correct.
That will be a huge help.
This is good, too, but it just, here again, the Cascade Township Strategic Implementation Advisory Committee appointments are as follow, on the, on the sheet. We can put that in the resume.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Motion to approve. Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the appointments to the Strategic Planning Implementation Committee as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item zero-seven-nine. Contracting with Hope Network for janitorial services. Manager Swayze?
Great, so this is actually, be visiting in contract, the Township Board approved earlier this year. So earlier this year, we did approve a contract with Hope Network to provide janitorial services for the Library Wisner Center. They have come highly recommendate, recommended from several sources. In addition, Hope Network provides employment opportunities for individuals with disabilities in a supportive, team-oriented work environment. They provide onsite working supervisors, monitoring, and coaching crew members throughout their sites. So our initial contract cost was forty-one thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars per year to provide the services outlined in the proposal, which includes daily, weekly, monthly, and yearly tasks. So we respond, remain responsible for all consumables, and Hope Network provides equipment and chemicals. So earlier this summer, we conducted a six-month review with the Billings and Grounds and Library Leadership Team. I've been very satisfied with the work Hope Network is doing. Additionally, the Billings and Grounds staff that was previously conducting cleaning have been reallocated to do work in other critical areas. So after consulting with the B and G leadership, we asked Hope Network to provide a quote to Clean Township Hall as well. The proposal received would be for two days per week, which would be Tuesday and Friday evenings, and which is roughly equivalent to the current cleaning work being done by our B and G staff. The quote from Hope Network is for ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars per year, and if approved, they would begin their services on October third. This would can allow us to continue to reallocate our B and G capacity over to core maintenance areas such as parks, pathways, and open spaces. So in your packet, I provided the proposal from Hope Network, as well as the current Hope Network contract. The contract proposal was reviewed by township staff, including the HR leadership and Billings and Grounds leadership. The review included an interview with the manager of janitorial operations for Hope Network and a facility walkthrough. The consensus is, we believe that engaging Hope Network for this work would be a positive benefit to Township Hall and free up our B and G staff to attend to other issues. As I mentioned, the proposal calls for an annual amount of ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. This portion of the contract will be paid from the general fund, while the Library Wisner Center contract amounts will continue to be paid from the library fund. The combined cost of the Library Wisner Center and Township Hall agreements, which comes to fifty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, is still less than the average cost of employment for the Billings and Grounds position that was eliminated. So with that, the board is recommend, or the staff is recommending the board approve the addition of Township Hall building to the janitorial services agreement with Hope Network.
I just have a comment about that agreement, date will be updated. So one of the packets says January third, twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll actually update the actual agreement, to put that in there.
Ben, have we got an idea about how many hours a week B and G used to dedicate to that?
So it was a minimum authority, sometimes it would be.
That's a lot.
It would be more, so there was really a full position dedicated to cleaning, even though it might be two people dedicating twenty hours of their work, so.
Okay.
You know, removing the one position that wasn't filled and replace it with a janitorial is kind of a tip for that.
Got you, thanks, Ben. I make a motion to go ahead and extend the contract to include the township offices as it's been presented, and I'm sure that they'll have continued oversight by Ben and the staff.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the contract, the proposed contract with Hope Network, to include the Township Administration Building. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'd just like to thank Buildings and Grounds, who've really done the lion's share of maintenance, cleaning, everything for a really long time with a small group of people, so. No more items, this just brings us to Article ten, discussion, and we have one item tonight. The process this board will use for selecting an outside engineering firm. Manager Swayze?
Great, so we did issue the RFP for engineering services in late summer, early fall. So that closed, and we did receive five bids, all from local-ish reputable engineering companies. All of them come highly recommended, I included all of five of the bids that we received in your packet. Myself and our new township engineer have begun reviewing them, but we need to decide. Myself and our new township engineer have begun reviewing them, but we need to decide what the formal review process is going to be. So in the past, we have done potential interviews with, with contractors in committee meetings. I didn't know if the township board wanted to do interviews, to put together an ad hoc committee to do interviews, if we wanted to do interviews with the full board, if we wanted to do them at a regular meeting, if we wanted to do them in a special meeting. So I guess I'm looking for a little direction from the board as to how we want to evaluate, choose a consultant.
Trustee Shipley?
I've got a couple of comments. First of all, I find it interesting that our last engineering firm apparently didn't put in a RFP. Well, that's interesting. Secondly, since engineering is, consumes a pretty good chunk of our revenue, rightfully so, we're growing township. I personally would like to see the entire board perhaps review the top two people as recommended by staff.
I think the simplest and fairest way is to do that. Interview, probably schedule a special meeting so it doesn't take away from these, you know, regularly conducted business, but a special meeting or two if necessary for the entire board to interview several, however many we choose, all of them or take the top two or three.
I would leave that up to you and the, and Ben to figure out how many people we interview or how many groups, but I think that that would be the most logical decision since we're going forward and gonna put a lot of faith in this person, even though Ben has right-hand man now within the office to do a lot of it.
John, you were, you were kind of suggesting an ad hoc committee to look at it first and then get it down to two and then have the full board look at, interview.
That's up for discussion. I'm, I'm easy to either way.
Cause that seems to make sense to maybe have a, have an ad hoc committee go through them all, get it down to two, and then have the full board interview the two.
Should we do it tonight? If we only have, what, four or five?
Five.
Can we do it right now? Skip another committee, or do you want to appoint a committee to look at?
I think it makes sense to appoint a committee. I, I did go through all of them and, you know, I selected ones that I thought would be good for, but I think, I think having maybe two or three people go through them with Ben and our engineer and see what they think, and then bring those two or three back to us and we can do the interview. Like you said, as a special meeting, I think that's best to not take away from the board meeting, but to have a special meeting for that.
I'm game with it. I volunteer. If you're taking volunteers, I'll throw my, my heart in the ring.
Yeah, I've got, I've read through a lot of these too, and I've got some couple ideas. I'll, I'll jump in.
Treasure Pierce, your hand.
Noticed something because of my legal background, the cover letter from Williams and the first line says, "The you for your consideration." It tells me that they're not that focused on being precisely right, correct?
So that poor editor who cost them a massive, massively lucrative contract.
Yeah, but it's a symptom.
I get it. Well, that makes it, wait, that knocks it down to four. I, do we really need to do this a couple of weeks for our subcommittee?
Yeah, for one little error, I don't think we should eliminate them completely at this point.
I didn't say that. I just.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's a good, good, good catch. So do you want to be the third person maybe, Ken, to help whittle down?
Well, you just, you just nominated yourself. I'm kidding. All right. How do you guys want to do it? Do we want to make a motion to, anyone else would like to participate in a subcommittee?
Sure, I'll, with John and Timmy, I'll, I'll, I'll be on it with them. Okey dokey. And then our goal will be to get it down to two or three. We determine, make a recommendation on the two or three, maybe it's three, maybe it's two, and then bring it back to the board, and then the board can set up the schedule to do the interviews.
I'll be on it, just to make sure you guys decide, right? Oh, shoot.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, then just decide, right? Okay. So I'd make a motion that trustee Shipley, trustee McDonald, and trustee Nordhook certainly wouldn't create and.
An ad hoc committee.
An ad hoc committee with those three appointments.
To come back with a recommendation of two or three.
With the top two or three engineering candidates.
Support.
Anyone second? Oh, trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, I'm sorry, to create the ad hoc committee with the previously mentioned appointments. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks for your willingness to participate.
So you got a final say?
Public comments. Whether it's on the agenda or not, now is the time. Or anyone wishing to speak?
Ken Vanderkark, seventy-two hundred Leighton. Do we have a Parks Department or somebody head of Parks?
No, that's the million-dollar question. We need.
Somebody we can come with a request to for the parks.
You can make a request to Brian Hillbrands.
I went kayaking this last week and I put in on the Thorncrest side of the dam. And it looks like somebody has moved one of the posts to make their own private launch site for boat in and out of there.
I can actually, so I'll talk to STS Hydro Power. They're actually responsible for maintaining that.
Is that a county park? Is it a township park? Or is it the dam property?
So it's township-owned property.
So somebody's making a private launch site there. They took one of the posts that was in there to keep people from driving back in. They moved the post so that they could get back in there. There's tire cracks going down the walkway to the, to the water's edge.
Yeah, well, let them know that that needs to be replaced. So it is technically a public launch. We're required to have that because of our, our FEMA license, but we put that post specifically there so that it's mostly hand-carried boats that get, get launched there. So, but I'll let them know that post needs to be replaced.
So they, they can't, there, there used to be a picnic table there. Can they get another picnic table there?
I can talk to them about it, yeah.
But this is a whose property is it now?
So the township owns the property, but it's included in the lease to STS Hydro Power, and they're responsible for the maintenance of it.
They could add to the walkway then because they've, they let it go deteriorating and everything else and the whole works there. But it just seems like somebody's making their own private launch site there for backing. They had tracks all through the grass and back into the water there. So they're, they're using it for that's, that's not a private, the, the River Association's not going to go for that, are they?
Wait, are you talking about above the dam and then opposite side of the river across from Tassel Park?
Correct.
Okay, we're in cross.
There's a parking area there and a grass area. The dam has, there's fenced off. Gated off and fenced off and everything else. And there is a nice little park there. A lot of people go in there and have lunch and sit in their cars and stuff, and it would be a good place for a park. And if we had a director of parks, we could direct our, our request to. So can we work on this?
Hundred percent. We are, right, Ben?
When?
I'll contact him tomorrow.
But then as far as staffing, that's a big, we have a Parks Committee who are volunteer residents that have been doing a fantastic job and working really hard. But as we move forward, I think it's the board's job to work with staff to make sure that we have resources, you know, allocated funds. We've got a lot of resources, but to make sure that there, and then also staff in, in this area, to make sure that the strategic, that the residents' priorities, that we're able to do it. And I think that is a weak area where we are still lacking.
There was a meeting a week ago, wasn't there, or two weeks ago for the?
Parks Committee?
Parks Committee, the volunteers. I missed that. I mean, I was gonna go to that one and I missed it. Do they, is it once a month they meet?
Tuesdays at eight AM.
Every Tuesday or every?
Once a month.
Once a month on.
Is it the second or the?
I'm sure it's on the internet.
I believe it's the second Tuesday.
It is on our, it's on our township calendar online.
But can we work on a director of parks?
I think it's.
We've got, we just voted to build a new park on Y Cliff. And we've got a park. And so let's put somebody in charge.
I'm with you. Hundred percent. We don't have any specific millage or specific funding for acquiring property going forward. Nothing. It's just been loosey-goosey and we don't have any formal parks director. So that keeps coming up at the Parks Committee meetings, and it helps to hear from residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure you guys covered this already, just I missed it. You talked about two thousand people saying what they thought were important things for us going forward. Can you give us a quick, brief overview what they thought was important?
So we, I would say, and it won't be as well-spoken as the firm that we hired, but essentially parks and recreation, so it was quality of life for residents. Parks and recreation, green space, presence, preservation of kind of the residential feel of Cascade, and then also making a downtown or village-type area that's more walkable, bikeable, pedestrian-friendly. Were the main priorities. And then public safety, public safety. So basically, quality of life and, and ma- making sure that Cascade maintain, it stays a great place for residents.
I think it, I think it's posted on the website.
Yeah, the full plan, the, the full plan is on the website. If you go to the September fourteenth, Pat, if you ever go onto Agenda and, and Board, you, you click on the home site, and you go to see packets and agendas, go to Board, and the Board packet. I think of September fourteenth as the full presentation.
But we'll go easier than that, right?
It's actually, so it's on the Connecting Cascade website. That was a website we used for the entire strategic plan process. So that's where the full plan is posted right now.
And then, and then lots of specifics. One of the areas that kept coming up was, like, very specific areas was that bridge that crosses Thornapple, or the Thornapple River on Cascade Road. Dangerous for kids, bikers, pedestrians, connecting to Cascade Rec Park, just making it a better place to live and maintaining property values for taxpayers. It's funny, because I looked at the strategic plan top priorities from the previous one, I think it was five years or so ago, totally different. Not what I would, that we didn't hear from. Public transportation, enhancing public transportation, just different things that didn't come out with this set, so. So I think it was a really successful process. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Mr. Hughes, welcome. We wondered where you were.
Yeah, yeah, I bet you were worried. Jeff Hughes, seven, two, five, zero, led by Glenn. First of all, I want to extend my thanks for the expansion of the contract with Hope Network. I was on the Hope Network board for decades. And also, Hope Network provided services down at the federal district court. And as far as I know, they're still doing it. And excellent job, excellent organization. It really is a win-win proposition. So thank you very much on behalf of Hope Network. Tonight, I hopefully will be brief. I want to get back to the issue of biodiversity and, and maintaining biodiversity up at Burton Park. And if I may approach, I'd like to pass out some pictures.
Thank you.
The first picture you'll look at is a screenshot of a PowerPoint presentation by Maryland D N R officials. And what it does is illustrate the damage that deer can do to the biomass of woodlands. And as you might expect, the bear side is where the deer have been. And the other side of that fence is where the deer cannot have access to. And you can see dramatically what the difference is there. By the way, if any was in anyone's interest, this PowerPoint presentation, it's on YouTube, and I can give you the link. But it's very good. I think it's a very even-handed explanation of the problems presented by deer. And it doesn't come to any judgment. He simply is trying to explain why they can be a problem and how their way of controlling it and why people may not want to control. Now, the second picture is a picture that I took when I was camping at Manastee National Forest this summer. And that picture was taken right at the edge of the campground that we were at, the campsite that we were at. And you notice there is a considerable amount of biomass there, similar to on the first page, on the, the protected side of the fence. Now, Manastee National Forest has deer. It does not have, I suspect, anywhere close to the amount of deer that we have, and the reason why is it's, it's more dense woodland. And as I explained in one of the other presentations that I've made, because of the way that we are, have developed.
Thirty seconds.
May I have some additional time, please? The, the way that we have, that Cascade has developed, it encourages an increase in deer. I think the deer study is going to show that. If it doesn't, it doesn't, but we'll see. Now, the last page is two photographs I took of Burton Park. This is looking into the woodlands right up where the maintenance shed is. And you can see that looks a lot more like the bear side of the the first picture that the Maryland D N R person presented. It's important that we have this biomass if the purpose of Burton Park is to maintain a natural area. And it may not be important even during our lifetimes, but if we cannot allow, we cannot permit additional trees to grow up, eventually, there's no going to, not going to be any forest up there. Again, not in our lifetimes, I expect, but it will be gone. And that is one of the reasons why it's so important to be able to control the deer population in Burton Park. And how many it takes to get down to something that's more manageable for our type of environment now. But if we want to have a natural woodland experience up in Burton Park, something does have to be done. I think these pictures illustrate exactly why. So thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone on Zoom would like to participate in this public comment, and I believe there was at least one person who raised their hand, please raise your hand again, and we will allow that. Just please keep it to three minutes, one moment.
While we're waiting, Ms. Bratt, can we put this in the?
In the supplements?
Yep.
Of course.
Thank you.
I guess they don't want to speak.
Manager comments?
Great. So first to give an update on a couple of topics that we've been following over the past couple of meetings. So our community policing officer, Deputy Diappa, has been working hand-in-hand with M dot on the homeless issue at the bridge. Because it is M dot property, they have a process that they follow. They have a, they call it their street team. They come and they have people staying on M dot state property, offer services to them, including relocation assistance. So it is their policy that before any, anybody is relocated from their property, that has to happen first. So that happened earlier this week. They came down, they offered assistance. I don't know if anybody took it. But actually, about four hours ago, M dot then sent the trespass letter authorization to the Kent County Sheriff's Department to begin trespassing people off of M dot property. So they will be removing them from the property. There is a company that M dot hires to do cleanup afterwards. They're scheduled to come Friday and clean up the site. And then the Sheriff's Department will continue to monitor the site to make sure that there aren't people staying there. So that's really the short-term solution. I do think we need to get some longer-term solutions as well. Deputy Diappa had some ideas, some research that he had done, so we're gonna meet next week and talk about that. But in the short term, that process isn't happening with Egypt Creek. So we did reach out to our representatives last week. And as Supervisor Lesprance mentioned, she was able to speak directly to somebody in Representative Albert's office today. So we're forwarding them all of the necessary information. We did reach out to Eagle again, just to tell them that, you know, we don't think this is a dead situation, that we'll continue to pursue our options, basically telling them that other pressure will be coming. Now hoping that they would then act on their own. I haven't heard back from them yet, so I'm not surprised. Now, hoping that they would, uh, then act on their own. Haven't heard back from them yet, so I'm not surprised. Um, uh, slow process, but at least Representative Albert's office was, uh, was quick to respond, so, uh, that is, that is good. Um, and then I just wanted to let the public know and the board members to know that we are doing a groundbreaking for our fire station number one project on Wednesday, October twenty-sixth at ten AM. So everybody is invited to, to come to that. Uh, the building will be demoed, so this is the groundbreaking for the uh, building of the building, not the demo of the building. Uh, if you drove by there on the way in today, you'll notice the fencing's all up, all of the landscaping has been removed. Uh, we expect the demolition to happen there, uh, probably next week sometime, so. That project is ripping and roaring, and we're excited to get shovels in the ground and, uh, start the, the clock ticking. And that's all I have tonight.
And the flagpole from the fire station is now over at the?
So the flagpole was relocated to the West Dell Park, uh, which is nice. It'll be, and if you look at it, it looks like it's always been there, so. Um, you know, that was a good, uh, review of that resource.
Thank you. Manager, or excuse me, board member comments. Trustee Shipley, and then Treasure Pierce?
Always my pleasure to stand up and thank you guys, Mr. Hughes and everybody else that came to the meeting tonight. A little bit on the skinny side, so bring your neighbors to the next meeting, please. Okay, the more voices the better. Once again, anybody out there in, uh, electronic land, thanks for listening.
Have a comment? I wanted to let everyone know that our sign was installed at the cemetery today. It's fifteen hundred pounds of real stone. It is beautiful. It was installed in the morning, and I, uh, saw the guys there, and that is a picture that I sent to them. So I'm very pleased with how it turned out. It is gorgeous, so. Drive by and see it. Wow, it's great. It's exactly like the picture. It's always satisfying when that happens.
Treasure Pierce?
Two items. Report to you that the amount collected on the tax collection as of the September twenty-eighth. We've collected ninety-six point six-nine percent versus last year, ninety-five point seven-nine percent. The increase in rule, tax roll went from forty-two nine to forty-five one. It's a big increase. Second issue is I'm disappointed that our disgruntled taxpayer didn't show up for Channel Eight.
Yeah. No follow-through.
I make up on everything.
I can tell you looked extra nice tonight.
Yes, John.
I had one quick comment. The, we've, a lot of biz, several local businesses and several residents have expressed concern about that hotspot, um, near the I ninety-six and Overpass on Twenty-Eighth Street. And those hotels that are around that area have just been a magnet, um, for an increasing crime. All different sorts of crime, shootings, thefts, trafficking, overdoses, and the township has dedicated a lot of resources, financial resources, to that area. It doesn't help the people that are, that are living there. It's unsafe for them, also unsafe for the local business owners. A, a woman called me last week. She's been here thirty years. They have a warehouse. Five-by-eight trailer with the, um, padlock. The whole thing was stolen. Um, it's right by that Red Roof Inn behind McDonald's. Same woman saw a, a family, it was like four or five different kids, all the, between pre and teenagers, running through the hotel parking lots unattended. Um, our sheriffs, deputies that we have in our, in Cascade, dedicated, have done a really good job. But I think I'd like to see on the next agenda, because there has to be things that we can do proactively, as far as ordinance is, or things that we can do as a board from the top, that'll give, um, us the teeth we need to really proactively get rid of this situation. It's not fair to the surrounding businesses either, and I think they only respond to the bottom line, to finance it, the finances. Money, where it hurts.
Money, right. I've often thought that requiring hotels or motels to require a credit card for check-in would, would help rather than coming up with cash.
There's gotta be ordinances, because we are not alone, and, uh, Assessor Genter, those hotels have been changing hands, right, ownership? There's some.
The motel.
The motels, and they, so the same businesses that are making it hard for other local businesses to, to, to attract and keep employees, um, who don't feel safe there, they all, um, appealed their tax assessment, correct?
Not all.
Most.
Yeah, a few. We've got five this year, but most of them are the hotels that are appealing. Um, the motels haven't, because they are getting the traffic, but it's a lot of transient and monthly rentals.
So it's costing us a.
Which isn't reported income.
Right, disproportionate amount of ca- of township resources, and then disproportionately hurting vulnerable people that may or may not live here, but then surrounding businesses too. So I'd like to see it on the next agenda, and I think there are some tools that we can get from our legal counsel. We can nip this in the bud. It won't be perfect, but it doesn't have to keep keep on as it has been. Trustee Norduk?
It seems that we're, a lot of our service calls from the fire department are going down there.
Yeah.
Costing the township a lot of extra money. Is there a way that we could, um, put a service fee on each call, maybe, uh, have a, you get two free a month, but after that, you just look at something on that order, uh, for commercial?
Yeah, so what we've begun researching is, uh, which commonly referred to as a cost recovery ordinance.
Yes.
Um, so Kenwood has a limited one. Some other communities use it as well, so. Problem is that it has to be implemented equitably, uh, so we'll need to work with our legal counsel to make sure that we're not overstepping our bounds, but uh, what you're thinking about is a tool that's out there available.
You think that'd be a good one, then we might get some responsible hotel ownership.
What about some, within our zoning, or within our zoning ordinance or something, what we allow within certain businesses?
Do we allow hotels to be apartment complexes?
That kind of stuff.
That kind of stuff, yeah.
So I'll have to look, I mean, I think there are state laws about that too, but I'll have to, I'll have to look into that.
Any other, uh, more comments? Trustee Shipley?
I simply make a motion to, uh, for adjournment, since the business of this agenda and this board has been completed.
Second. Uh, motion.
Proper word, adjournment.
Motion by trustee Shipley to adjourn, supported by clerk Slater, and also trustee McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.